I'd like to call the Bethel Township Planning Commission meeting to order. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment on the agenda only? Hearing of visitors. Mr. Zuck?
Well, it's Mr. Shaffer.
Mr. Zuck couldn't be here. I guess he was gonna come, but did make it. Brent Shaffer. Thanks for having some time to listen to me tonight. I was contacted by Mr. Zuck. He apparently came to Bethel Township zoning hearing for special exception back in July to add some, and I have full-size plans. It looks like you guys all have half-size. Does anybody want the full-size? Let me know. He apparently, you know, came in in July for a special exception to add some greenhouses to his property. And ultimately, that application did prevail. And so, I guess he was talking with Robin. She suggested that he get a professional come in. And I spoke with Robin a couple of times about it. And she suggested we come in and just present the plan to the Planning Commission to get a little bit of direction on what we need to do here. In essence, you know, what he wants to do is he has a couple of greenhouses that are there now. And he would like to add, initially double that, the amount of greenhouses he has and add a retail, expand a retail area. I guess he has a small retail area that he's currently using, but he'd like to put in a building that would have 70% of it be used for retail in front of the greenhouses that are there now. I understand, you know, from the zoning hearing that stormwater was questioned. It was an issue. We would have no problem, you know, processing a stormwater plan. You expect that we would do that at a minimum. I guess, you know, maybe Robin can speak a little bit to it. She said there may be something in the ordinance that allows the, the, what? How did you put it? What was it? Sorry.
I've been very ill. I can't think what I did this morning.
Okay. Well, there was, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't mean to, I'm just trying to, I don't wanna misquote what we spoke about. But there was something in the ordinance that permitted an expansion of existing use for a farm stand or something to that effect.
Okay, I can address it. When I wrote my review letter of his request, I cited Section 630.09, "Other agricultural or plant and animal production land use is not specifically set forth within the ordinance." Because, and that's a special exception, because he did not meet, I think initially, you know, it was, it fell, I thought it was going to be a private greenhouse. Then he chose to make it have public access. He did get a permit, and he did go to the board. But now he's looking to expand it. And it really didn't fit very well into any of the other uses that were allowed, either by right or special exception. So that's why I chose this one. Your plan is a great improvement as to what he took to the zoning hearing board. And you can address a lot of the issues that left him totally clueless. Although I wasn't there, I did hear from the solicitor who I see at other meetings. So I think just your entry on this project is going to be a big assist. Unless somebody else can think of, you know, I just don't think he really fits into a use variance at this point. He's expanding an already-existing situation.
Right. I guess the big question is, that I have is, do we have to come in for a land development? Or do we, can we fall in under a lesser type of process?
That's why you're here.
Yeah. I mean, that's basically, you know, the question we have is, you know, can we do this with a stormwater plan that shows zoning compliance and that kind of thing? Or would we, you know, fall in under land development?
Am I reading this correctly? That the proposed greenhouse is total about 11,200 square feet?
Yes.
Versus the 5,600 that is existing?
Correct. Yeah. So we would be, I don't know exactly, you know, I think his plans would be to build two additional greenhouses for 5,600 square feet initially, and then possibly add two more within the next three to six years, something like that. We would design a stormwater for capacity, you know, for all of it so that, you know, it would be simple for him to do the future ones later on.
Yeah, definitely, we got lots of stormwater concerns, especially with, I believe that's the curve where we usually have washout onto the main roadway. Isn't that the curve that tends to wash?
I don't know.
I feel like that is. There at that S-curve? But regardless, yeah, with all of that impervious space, I see an expand, pavement expansion, certainly stormwater is gonna be of significant concern. The adjoining properties, though, I think the land development plan is going with, just provide that extra level of protection that all of the ordinances and such forth are being followed properly so that there's no infringement upon any of the neighboring property owners as well. I mean, that's part of the land development plan process. And why that's in place is to make sure that the existing neighbors are not adversely impacted.
If I may, would it be your desire to get this plan fleshed out in front of Mr. Steckbeck and Ms. Royer so that this board could give either a recommendation for or against when he goes back to the zoning hearing? Is that, that was your planning?
Well, that was one thing. I mean, I assumed we would have to go back to the zoning hearing for the special exception, correct? Yeah, and we would wanna have, you know, you know, I don't know that we would do all the engineering before that. I'm not sure that that would be practical. We probably wanna make sure we could get the zoning relief with the special exception before we would go into that amount of work.
But it sounds like the reason he didn't get the special exception is because there were all the issues that the Planning Commission would be concerned about. And I know it's kind of passed backwards.
Right.
But sometimes you do need to get the good housekeeping seal of approval from the engineer and the Planning Commission. So it gives the zoning board some comfort that if they grant the special exception or a variance, that neighboring property owners in the township are gonna be protected.
Right.
So, I mean, it would really be...
Well, we should, so would we, would we submit, say, a zoning permit again? Or kind of stormwater plan?
No, I think what you're, I think you need to, I don't wanna speak for the engineer, but you need a stormwater plan, you need a parking plan, a lighting plan, if that's required. I don't know if it would be. You need to show elevations. Are these buildings gonna intrude on neighboring property owners, you know, with light or glare or smell or anything like that? So just kind of do the touchstones that would make people have a comfort level that this, if it's approved, would be built according to township standards and would protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people traveling along Frystown, road, and neighboring property owners. So, I mean, it's not like he's asking to put in a couple of extra tables in his farm stand or take the farm stand from 600 to 800 square feet. It's really not a farm stand. It's a store. It's a store. And these are not little greenhouses. They're pretty big greenhouses. But I'm sure you could address people's concerns by, he's gonna have to spend some money. That's what he's gonna have to do.
So would that be, would that be, you know, are you saying it would be like a land development allocation?
Right, and stormwater. I mean, I think, and he's gonna do, this gets him maybe a recommendation from the Planning Commission. If he gets it, you know, maybe that persuades the zoning hearing board that it's a good project because it meets the standards. And then if you were to get that and get the zoning board approval, your plans are already done, basically. And it would come back and it'd be a matter, perfunctory matter to get them approved by the Planning Commission, but...
All right. Thank you.
Good luck with your project. All right, moving on. Approval of minutes from the August 10th meeting. All Planning Commission members should have received their minutes in the mail. And if there are no corrections or edits, I would entertain a motion to approve those. Motion by Betsy?
I'll second it.
Second by Sheldon. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay. Mr. Price, Solicitor report.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Steckbeck, engineer?
Nothing, except to let you know that the supervisors and the road crew have been diligently pursuing some repairs of flood damage on both North Faust Road and Midway Road. And DEP will be issuing emergency permits on Thursday. And then this deck will be out there to perform emergency repair work in case you see anything going on or get asked questions. It would be Faust Road at Stone Creek, just east of 419, and Midway Road and a little sort of Tower Creek Bridge.
Is that in conjunction with Talpa Hocken, I know it's the board, but...
It should be, but I don't know what Talpa Hocken and their staff are doing. They have the south half of the bridge and we have the north side.
Talpa Hocken has nothing to do with it, O'Brien. Well, Midway is their bridge. Lake Gravel Pit is ours, Airport is ours. I'm just saying.
Damage is...
On our side.
Yeah. I brought drawings to leave with you.
I was putting it out there.
Midway is not an expensive project. Faust Road would be more expensive.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Ms. Royer, zoning report.
I don't think there's anything really outstanding with the exception that I have not had an opportunity to be able to do land, plan reviews for the Moyer subdivision plan and main drilling and blasting subdivision plan. That's just a little out of my reach right now. But I will be hopefully able to get to it this coming month. If Jeff hasn't already done all the work.
Yeah, I'll be happy to help you with that.
Okay, thank you. The biggest issue really is 9141 old Route 22. You've received complaints, and I believe they were founded, about the glare on the RAR2 warehouse. And I have, I had pictures showing the glare. And Jeff was kind enough to provide me with the contact information for the individuals that he's been working with. And they're getting on this right away to replace the, or baffle the lighting. So I was really pleased with their quick response.
Which warehouse is that? The one across from Concrete Safety?
Next to Tommy Hassler.
Just out of curiosity, was the lighting that was installed different than what was on the initial lighting plan?
I think it was construction lighting, wasn't it?
I don't know. It was just very bright.
No, now it seems to be...
Now it's permanent lighting.
Oh, is it permanent?
Yeah, it's permanent on the east side, I think.
It did have a lighting plan that showed the required movements at the border. We'd ask them to have an expert come and measure it and give a report of his findings.
If anybody else have any questions for Robin? Okay?
Was there any complaints about water there with this heavy rain?
Not necessarily with the tropical storm. But I know previously Jeff had been looking at them.
I just meant the past two or three weeks.
Ryan, Ryan Block took me to various sites. And he showed me at RAR2, just one area of concern, which was at the opposite end from Mr. Hassler. He said that the water coming across Hassler's property was low. With such a low, it didn't even turn the grass over. So apparently that was fixed. Yeah, I would just like that. I talked to Tommy after the storms. And he said that there was water everywhere, but that was because there was so much rain. It was not coming from that side. Good to hear.
That is good.
That is good.
Anything else for Robin? Moving on then to subdivisions. First one, MB Investments. Their timeline is gonna expire soon. We've got another month, I guess. Air State Group?
That one has their preliminary. However, Alicia and I talked before the meeting, and she has a couple items she would like to bring to their attention as far as being able to get fire apparatus to certain areas of the building. She has written a letter. I am going to make a copy of that for you guys to look at for next meeting. But, I mean, they're not here, so we don't really wanna discuss it. But I just want you to be aware that there is a concern for fire.
And thank you, Alicia, for reviewing that. Each Frederick Bowman, Gerald Linda Bowman, and Bowman Farm Enterprises.
It's my understanding there was no response from Mr. Steckbeck. Except review letter.
It's Moyer. 1561 Brown Road. Do we have any sort of extension letter for, they're expiring today?
Correct. Board of Supervisors gave them until today. You guys had done whatever to December 9th. The board wants it September 14th. That's what I have on my side of the world.
So we approved an extension letter to December 9th, but the Board of Supervisors did not approve our recommendation and cut it back to September 14th. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's accurate.
Okay, 'cause I see that we acted on that last month. 550 and 551 Brown Road.
There's also a concern, again, we don't wanna really discuss it. And I sent that to Alicia. But there were some concerns brought up before. There was certain, a building they can't even get a fire truck to or any emergency. So it was sent to the engineer. And it was also, you guys probably have it months ago. We're gonna reintroduce that letter, and we'll go from there. But just wanna have that on the, very much.
Thought as a matter of practice, we were giving a copy of all the plans to the EMA folks to review.
So I do have the plans. I did submit my recommendations a couple of months ago. I think it was March or April. I don't remember what date it was. I just don't want it to be forgotten about just because we've had extension after extension after extension. So I wanna make sure that they are aware that I'm not gonna let those concerns go to rest. So I'm gonna keep the conversation going.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, nothing else on 550, 551, 49? All right. Moving on. Crossroads 10 LLC. Nothing?
Nothing, sorry.
No, it's okay. Neil M. and LMA Hoover.
This one, they were denied. And they were watched to be looking at revising plans. I don't know if Mr. Steckbeck has anything to do, but the township has not received anything.
Can I, what was denied exactly?
It was the zoning hearing board denied the proximity of the, something to the something.
The well and wetlands.
Well, or compound, or...
Right.
Thank you.
Wet lands, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, they would have to encroach. And so they're looking at purchasing more land from the, to get around that. But they haven't given us anything, no.
Okay. Well, with that date having expired, that plan expires, so they would have to submit all over again, right?
I don't know what needs to happen.
I won't ask. Yep.
They don't, doesn't seem urgent on their...
I mean, we can't, I'll go back to that side of the table.
Yes. Sorry. Mr. Price, so since the deadline has since expired, there being 9/5, then they will have to submit all new plans? Is that...
Yeah, because the, they don't have permission to put them where they showed them to DEP. So they have to get the DEP and Burke's Conservation District approval. So it doesn't, it's form over substance. They're gonna have to reapply. They're gonna have to get their DEP and township approvals.
Should I be asking them to withdraw what's current?
That would be prudent. And also with 550, 550 Brown Road, I think you want to get an extension letter from them too because that expires 10/13.
It's the day after next meeting.
Oh, it is?
So our October 12th is that meeting, so...
Yes, but we'll need the extension to get us to the October supervisors' meeting because the supervisors have to take the action. So we'll have to get at least a week. But I'm fearful that they're playing the game, that they want us to miss their deadline. And we wanna, we wanna definitely have an extension and/or a vote to reject based on deficiencies.
So we should go to the October meeting for the plan, I mean, for our board?
I would suggest maybe 60 days. Get it to November, just to be safe. Actually, it would be more than 60.
What?
Nine?
No, 'cause you take it from the 13th.
To November 16th at least.
To November 16th at least.
Anything else on 550 or 551? And the extension? All right, moving on then to the Moyer subdivision final plan. Looks like we do have an extension letter that was included in our packets here this evening for us to take action on. Looking for a 90-day extension. Taking it to January 8th, 2022. Do I have a motion recommending the exception to... Do I have a recommendation to accept this extension letter? Motion by George. Second by Mike. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. MD and B annexation Raceway Management. Extension letter, 90 days. And that has also been included in our packet. Looking for an extension, which would take it to the January 8th, 2022 meeting.
Well, it's a Sunday or Saturday, but it takes it to then. We'll deal with it December.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion by Mike to accept the exent, accept, extension letter. I can speak, really.
Second.
Second by Betsy. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. All right. Moving on to the new subdivision's land development. Moyer subdivision, George Moyer.
Good evening, everyone.
Devon, good to see you.
Some new but familiar faces.
Yes.
It looks like maybe I have to consider revising the name of the subdivision. We already have a Moyer subdivision in there. We're willing to do that in case of any choice. Or you think it's necessary? No? I'm here, I'm here on behalf of George and Pearl Moyer. They live on Frystown Road. They have several farms there. This property is 35 acres, just on the east side of Frystown, on the north side of Frystown Road. The goal here is very simple. There's a house and barn there. And in a corner of land, it's not really all that viable for the farming operation. So the goal is to subdivide the existing building from the farm. And that lot will contain about 3.6 acres gross. You can see the location of that lot, one, in the lower left-hand corner of the farm lot on your first sheet. If you wanna see a detail of it, that's on sheet two.
Closest one, three, get it to ten.
George, Joe, those greenhouses.
Did you find a mistake already, Steve?
No, we should have picked it off that day.
Okay. I believe that.
Is this in clean and green?
Uh, no, I don't think it is. I would, we would have picked up on that.
No, like this, this property has to be bigger or something. 'Cause right here, you're saying it is, it's just a piece of, it must be.
I say correctly. It is.
So you can only break off two without triggering.
Let me, let me make sure. I'm looking at the correct parcel report here. Are you considering maybe a sequence conveyance or... Are you considering maybe a sequence conveyance, or are we going to, one year and then I follow the next?
Right.
Yeah, he had, he had indicated to me that we were good for clean and green on this one, but, but thank you for bringing that up. So we will, we will be revising the plan to incorporate that. Is there a way that we can have the plan as it is accepted for review?
And you just make a comment about it, and he addresses the guy that I'm...
Make a comment, and then you can anticipate us to divide this in two pieces with a sequence.
Actually, it's nothing I would comment on, it's a business decision and a financial amplification, but he could probably do this under zoning.
Yeah, you just have to pay the, pay the breach, yeah, which would be very costly.
That's his business, so, yeah.
I don't see why it couldn't be...
Yeah?
Will that, will that change, give you any heartburn as we move forward in your progress?
No, no.
Okay.
You're just going to have to show your septic and well, and make sure that you don't need any easements for the drain field. Looks like you might have it on what you'll have on your first lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the second lot will be the one to the west of that, that will be an annexation lot to be conveyed, uh, the following year. If we can get this approved this year, we can do a, a December 31st, January 1st kind of thing.
Okay, so it's under three, three months.
Are there any other questions concerning the plan itself?
Not from my perspective, other planning mission members?
No, hunting trips are going to interfere with this?
Yes. Uh, I will not be here next month. Uh, George is already aware of that, and we'll, we'll try to get everything gussied up between me and your engineer so that we can possibly have approval by November, December. Uh, but we'll look for any comments that you have, see if there are any other issues that we need to deal with besides clean and green. Uh, and then we will plan on attending your November meeting.
Okay, sounds good, so let's then accept this plan for review. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second by Steve, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your help, appreciate it.
They also have given us the planning...
Waiver and non-building declaration?
Yeah, is there any reason to wait until the next one, or going to be done tonight?
All right, I will make that motion, uh, to have Betsy sign the planning waiver and non-building declaration. Do I have a second? Second by Mike, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Due unfinished business, the saldo. We have to wait and see what ultimately happens here with the traffic impact, and then we can start tackling, uh, the saldo. Moving on then to new business, I don't have anything. Looking around, anybody have anything? No. Other comment?
I have something to go.
Yes?
The ambulance company came to me and asked for if we could put up signage for the warehouses. It's, it's really hard to know the names of, like, which direction they have to turn or move. I don't know if it was you guys or if that's supervisors.
You mean existing warehouses?
Yes.
That'll be the supervisors.
Supervisors, thank you.
Yeah, Betty, if she has anything, she's the only one on Zoom.
Oh. Betty, do you have any comment for the public comment section?
Am I talking to you? Yeah, we're talking to you.
Can you, can she hear us, Jane?
Well... Yes.
Oh!
I do have...
We heard you.
I do have, oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my only comment is, um, I noticed that for the Hoovers, you asked Jane to ask for a withdrawal because they're out of their time. Is that something you do for all plans that have met, have gone past their time limits?
Not necessarily, the Hoover plan is kind of unique because what they showed on their plan is not what they could get approval for through DEP. So it really, really doesn't matter, they should, they need to start from square one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Okay, see none, motion to adjourn? Motion by Mike? Second by Steve, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you, Betty.